...that the council has and we can get them to answer that. Jovi, you want to do that?
Sure.
Try it. I mean, every word we don't need, but you'll hit the high points, will you?
Thank you, Mayor Captain. Yes, I'll try to make it as clear as we breathe.
That's about enough.
Mayor, can I break you something? I want everybody to know that, as you will remember, this time last year, the understanding was that we were going to be weaning Jovi off stormwater and we and David Tagen on the stormwater. And we're still trying to do this, but Jovi was so deeply immersed into so many of these issues that we let him, of necessity, remain fairly fully involved. Hopefully, this will be largely his swan song, which will require a reconstruction of a lot of minds, including mine, in terms of who we call or direct stormwater issues to them, because he's going to be more exclusively focused on road issues and then David Tagen will be on stormwater in the future. So hopefully, Jovi, this will be your swan song.
I guess he's just saying that you don't wean easily.
And they both continue to help each other. Their offices are right next door. They're very co-supported. They work well together. But the primary contact point in the future's going to be David Tagen, I hope.
Basically, when we started this process, we came up, people started asking about credits, stormwater credits. And as we were looking into the issues, we found a lot of, we found a few discrepancies in the ordinance and worked some issues that we thought needed clarified. A lot of it goes with the credit manual. We're getting a lot of feedback from the Stormwater Advisory Board that a lot of the issues, that it was basically a little bit too, it was too tough for anybody even to apply for the credits, that the credits that they could apply for and as far as to have them benefit financially weren't worth the efforts to put in any assistance to help correct the stormwater or help improve the stormwater. And that's basically how we're in this process, getting something that's not really just a cookie cutter ordinance, something that's more tailored to how the advisory board and you guys want to see as we move forward.
Do you want to hit any of the highlights of this?
Well, I can.
But this is the first such manual that we adopted. Is this a revision?
This is absolutely a revision to the one that's already that we're basically cleaning up the labor before.
Yes. And this is a revision of that adoption because they said it needed revising.
Yes.
So one of the highlights that I saw is, in discussion, is the give back or qualification for the school system to get somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 off the bills.
Yes, that has been a contributing factor. We've tried to take everybody's input, orchestrate this credit manual to fit what we believe is the intent from everybody on the advisory board and what we've heard from all the straight guys.
By doing this, by doing this for the school system, the city is, in essence, giving back to the community indirectly to all citizens in Canton by giving that back to the school system.
Tax on tax.
Yeah, tax. Yeah, good way to say it. I think tax on tax. So some of the other things that we want to give back through exemptions, I doubt if there would be, I don't know if there'd be a whole lot of participation there.
Sure.
I'm not sure we need to dwell a lot on that unless you pick one, the biggest item is the $60,000.
Well, I think, I agree with you, but I disagree with you also. I think the nature of the credit manual is to have everybody to participate in. What puzzles me is, almost a year ago, we sat down with the school district, Mr. Barrisford, myself, I think you were there, or someone else, and we told them, Merrick was there with. And we talked about this same provision, that it's not a new provision that you added to, that's been in there all along. And we were told at the time that they were going to write the letter to the city to show that they were teaching stormwater or water conservation in the school system and take the $60,000 to $70,000 credit. Apparently, that never was done.
Maybe they found out they're not teaching.
Well, I don't know. And the thing that I'm concerned about, I mean, that's something that I think they should take advantage of and we should counsel them so that they can take advantage of it, because as it was mentioned back then, it's one school teacher that they could hire from that amount of money. But what bothers me the most about this, and I read through the stormwater manual and the ordinance, and what bothers me the most is that this single-family credit is pretty much of a farce, because it says a maximum of 50%, but that's not really true. It's only true if you have a parcel of property that's over three acres, because if it's over three acres, you can get 25%. Well, I don't have three acres. I don't even have a half acre. So I can't possibly get 50%. The most I can get would be 25%. If I go to school for eight hours and learn watershed conservation, I can save 5%, which is a whole 20 cents on my bill, which is nonsense. And if I want to put on a rain barrel on my property, I've got to get a professional engineer and a site plan to certify that it's going from the gutter into the barrel, I guess. But that's nonsense, too. What I think we should do is revise that so that if you're going to do the watershed stewardship, you should at least be able to get 10%, make it up to 40 cents, but, and then the rest of it, get up, let the persons who are trying on a single-family residence get at least 50% on their, and then, you know, so you had up 50% and 25% for the three-acre lot, which you could still say it's a maximum of 50% that you can get. So you could clarify it that way. But otherwise, I think just the way the application is structured and the way this merits structure is, it's a farce and nobody's going to take advantage of it.
That has been one of the...
Part of that's been changed.
That has been. That was one of the original complaints that we had. We weren't receiving any application because of that very reason.
Engineers.
Engineers on the site. We were directed to go in and help ease the load on someone who was trying to do that on, say, a single-family residence.
Well, the appendix...
The thing now that is in here that has to be reviewed, say, or presented by a P or a land surveyor, is someone who is one of these retro bits like that has a hydraulic component, or it's a detention component, if you're having to calculate how much water's coming in about regs you want to release it, that sort of stuff.
Well, in the appendix that we were given, that showed, it still showed all that stuff in there. So it's not, as far as I could tell from the paperwork that I received, that all that other, all those other complications are still in the application procedure. It hasn't been revised. So what I'm saying is that maybe we need to revise this thing a little bit to make it a little more clear and make it a little more user-friendly.
We would, we would hit that, because that's been the main intent the whole time.
I have a question, Anthony. It's a unique thing. We have somebody in River Creek that's built a new house, and they got rain barrels on their front. Now, it's probably won't adhere 100% to this, and it may be just because they decided to be green and all that. But the problem is, I understand, we may have covenants and restrictions in these subdivisions that flow to give it that.
Absolutely.
And so I don't know how we, how do we address that particular issue?
We couldn't address that. That's, the covenant is a covenant. That'd be between them and the homeowners. So we couldn't, we couldn't address those at all.
Right. Well, we could, I'm not sure, but I know there's this issue of flying the flag that has crossed over into some covenant issue. And it was, I was told that there's a federal law that says you can fly the flag anyplace you want, anytime you want, so the covenants don't apply. I'm not sure if the city had an ordinance that said you could put in a rain barrel, the covenants wouldn't be superseded by the city's ordinance. I don't know that answer.
We wouldn't want to do, I mean, we wouldn't want to override anybody's covenants.
On the flag, that's not easy, because I, I don't know, you know, I do have a 20-foot stainless steel flag. And I did a lot of research on flag covenants. And what they ruled was that you can't restrict the flying of the flag, but you can set specifications as to how the flag will be flown, i.e. a certain size from the porch and so forth like that. But they can restrict still a 20-foot flag pole. I'd have to go through a long process.
Well, I mean, I was just trying to use that as an example, but I, but I'm thinking that there aren't that many, I'm not sure how many covenants, we have covenants too, but people put in rain barrels anyway. But it also, you know, if a builder wants to put in a system, that's a better deal than a rain barrel.
Jovi, in this manual, and I apologize for being back in town recently, does it address in the manual retention points or is that a different place?
It addresses in the ordinance that all about property having outside stormwater management system, which includes detention points.
They talk about the maintenance of?
It does not specifically mention maintenance of.
Somewhere, it's, somewhere, it's my understanding that the homeowners are responsible for the maintained retention points.
That is correct.
So it's not, in this policy, where would it be, you know?
That is, all these developments, we generally try to get, I say generally, almost always, unless it's listed correctly, we get a stormwater maintenance agreement for the HOA to take over and maintain their parks, their storm sources.
Because I can speak only for, I will, I've seen one other, but Great Sky must have 20 retention points, and they've got trees like this growing out of them.
Right.
And our homeowners does nothing towards it. So to enforce that, it might be a burden on our own homeowners. But that needs to be enforced, because it's not getting better. It's getting worse. It's full of snakes, which is, and they're not fenced, which is a safety hazard.
Jovi, I don't know if this question is valid for you or should be addressed to Dave or should be addressed to Scott, but if we have in the provision of the stormwater credit manual that we're going to have education for stormwater concert, water conservation, have we made provision for how that education would be, if they've made available to the people? And also, in that pseudo-budget that was submitted to us by the Stormwater Advisory Board at the last meeting, did they take into consideration a reduction of $70,000 from the school system or any impact that the cost of the education might apply? I don't know. I'm asking questions. Who is the answer?
I think the Stormwater Advisory Board based their expenditures on the revenue projections that the, I guess Nathan had provided them, whether, I'm not sure whether or not he had considered that or not.
No.
My guess is not, just as my guess is there was no projection for new revenues to come in from the new discount stores down toward Woodstock, which, in my opinion, will be a significant amount of additional sales tax revenues, although that's not this issue.
One of the issues we're right ahead of with the street board is they own several properties in the city. A lot of them, if they've got some places that are strictly parking lots, they've got the administration buildings, they've got various properties that they're not all school establishments, where they could even teach on those properties. So that's a question, if you guys decide to let them be exempt from their stormwater charges, does that apply to all the properties owned by the CCSD within the city limits?
Currently.
They don't take the infrastructure building up here for a time. There's a lot of questions that need answering and some thought put into.
Their fee, they're being charged currently, it's, what's it say, $70,000. That does take into account all of those properties within the city, school or administrative building or just city. That's where it's calculated. Then the question becomes, do we want to be partners? And that's something we want, to keep the schools over here in downtown. $70,000 out of that budget, and as you mentioned, what they brought forward here, there seem to be a good surplus of funds. That $70,000 from kids, like wood, grain, goodwill. And one of the issues that was, had been before, when they were talking about this, and it's been changed, as I recall having this phrase in here, 100% of available students, that's a key, available students. Where it was before was 100% of students will have to have this educational program. And what happened, because we discussed with Russ, he's retired from school work in the last year, he said, we can't guarantee you have 100% participation from students, because when they get to high school, they have selection courses they can choose from, and doesn't necessarily match up with these programs. So it really looks like there was an effort, but it's all... So it really looks like there was an effort, but it's worth to resolve the problem. What we should just do, instead of having, we could have all this verbiage in here if we want, we'll just say they're exempt, period. That, to me, that eliminates a lot of second guessing. And the other thing is, here we are in the middle of August, and this had to be done by August first, or they gotta wait until next year. So when we put so much verbiage in some of this, it, it doesn't accomplish what we want to accomplish, or at least what I want to accomplish. I want to accomplish exam. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Question. How much education are we supposed to provide these students? Or how much is supposed to, in terms of hours or time?
But that's all completely up in there. We can specify.
Couldn't we just say that they're all a student assembly?
That they, what, when we got out of the program, when we got, what, some teachers put up posters in their classrooms, you know?
Why is that?
So there's different ways of communicating, maybe the student, the watershed, and take care of.
They have given us lists of classes, and they say they talk about the water cycle and give them... And then they talk about, you know, environmental issues all the way up through. Does those classes qualify as this? It's up to you guys to decide, but the, uh, they tell me that it gives a change of curriculum to add something that's not in a state accredited curriculum, is a major change. That they feel that they're covering.
Yeah.
The intention of these kids and water quality and water conservation.
It states in the, in the, uh, credit manual, five hours of curriculum. We see a full hundred percent credit. Each student shall receive a total of five hours of curriculum, and urge to receive full hundred percent credit.
And I think that's the reason you don't have the letter from the school system is that they can't...
They can't comply with.
They can't comply, and they're just doing what's right. They still pay the bill. They would like to, but it's, I understand it's difficult for them to, shoot, they're taken out in courtesy writing. They're not even gonna be able to sign the check, these kids. In the, in the science, uh, curriculum, there is paragraphs that will discuss more coming from sky, in the ground, running into a creek, and...
Erosion, erosion, or sedimentation.
And it will go through all of the different cycles and stuff, and it's by no means five hours. It's maybe twenty minutes.
Well, I asked for something else.
But at least there is education being given to them, and Diane, and it's always said she's going up there a lot with a lot of input and stuff.
We should, we should ask the school district, uh, you know, just to be, uh, in, in the spirit of the credit manual, say, "Well, how many hours is it feasible for you to instruct these children in water conservation to make it qualify for any reason?" Stormwater credit. Let's say, what can you, what can you do rather than, I'll say, it's either, we'll just, we'll say it's in here and they'll just give it to you for nothing?
Well, uh, Janet, to someone's point.
Uh, Janet?
On the school board?
No, real under the stormwater.
Water.
She was a teacher.
Minnie.
Miss Sheldon.
Jane, Jane Sheldon, yeah, Jane.
Yeah. She was a school teacher up there, she'd been discussing this part of it. It was like, you know, we're asking for... They're, they're not gonna give us any big time. This, this won't fly, so they, they won't...
Where did we get, we didn't, we didn't just make this up, did we? I mean, it came from other, other jurisdictions, I mean, the state or whoever set this up?
Uh, that, that we didn't make this up. I'll take, well, B S A from, uh, Green, Eric. Uh, Green, Eric.
No, I think, I think it came from the state or someplace.
Well, they could have been pulled. That doesn't mean it's condescending. It's, it's, you know, to me, it's, uh... It's, the common sense of questions is that, do we wanna give them the six thousand dollars or seventy, whatever the amount of money it is? Do we want something back? Absolutely. I think that we should or couldn't ask, and Mr. Wood and I went over and asked that they join in with us, if we give them sixty thousand dollars over, and you say, over ten years, how much is that, you know? That's, that's a lot of money that we could go towards a parking garage. Now we're talking about getting something back. We go in with the school board, with the county, or with whoever, and divide this up, we can get us a parking garage without the city absorbing the entire burden of trying to do it, because we don't have that kind of money. But we need a parking garage, and he voluntarily gives us a piece of land down here. Is that what he said, Mr. Wood? He gives that land. All we have to do is say, "Here's the sixty thousand dollars." He'll say, "Here's the land."
Realize there's no way you're gonna get five hours of education.
Yeah.
Someplace wanna have to keep track of who did it. Uh, it just, it seems like it, it's an insurmountable task for him, and...
It smacks of what Mr. Rush was talking about, just in scale for a resident. My, my stormwater fee is four dollars and eight cents a month.
Right.
Now, for me to go out and buy a rain barrel, which is questionable if I can find a spot to put the thing, and put the rain barrel in and mess around with it, it will take me three years to recoup the, if you do it and did it right.
Here's, here's even the worst thing is, if you really look at it, how much does us, cost us to go out and inspect that you've done it? And then we're gonna incur costs besides.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't, you know?
So what do we wanna do? Do we wanna just eliminate and get and say, "The schools, the school system is taking care of their water"? Is that... Okay. Isn't that, hadn't that been established, John? Let me make a recommendation. That's what I'm trying to do. I know it. Just clear out schools, then we'll go back to residents.
Can, can we, can we shift here a little bit and make sure we're, school is government building? Uh, we're, we're not, we're not talking about any other government buildings other than schools?
No, it specifically states in the government, government buildings are not exempt.
Okay. But I'm, but, but a school is government built.
The only reason we're considering this...
One, are we gonna exempt the other government?
That's what I'm saying. We shouldn't, we shouldn't exempt them. We should ask them, "What's practical for you to comply with the credit manual by saying, 'We will teach conservation for X number of hours'?" And if you, if you say in a letter, "You're doing that, we accept it," and we accept you, but you're doing, you're doing something to get the benefit of it.
But Bob, wouldn't you rather get something back?
I'm, I'm saying we gotta comply with the rules here, this...
Well, we're getting ready to change the rules.
The state...
To where we can do something?
The government says you have to have a credit manual, and if you're gonna have the stormwater...
We'll have a credit manual for the residents. On these, on this school system, if they are doing what I've been told, if they are taking care of their own stormwater, if they're taking care of their own stormwater, which is different than others, that's the only reason it's exempted, not because they're government.
It's different than an H O A taking care of their stormwater.
Well, they're not, though.
With a retention pond. We're not giving them credit. So I, I say, yeah.
That's residential.
Something back, but you gotta, you gotta, you gotta play by the book.
You know, it, I, 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 whether or not I was a teacher one time, and I can tell you, it wouldn't be that difficult for the administration to send around a sheet of paper or a small pamphlet about, about stormwater to every student, send it home with them. And then in their literature class, in their grammar class or something, or whenever they have to write an essay, give them, say, "We'll do an essay about that," you know? It, it wouldn't be that difficult if they really truly wanted to do that, uh, and, and say, "That's all you gotta do, period," you know? Each student write an essay. We're not gonna grade you whether it's accurate or not, but that you have seen the information and have reviewed that, that was sent home with you, and just write a couple paragraphs about it. How, maybe the paragraph would be, or the, the essay would be, "How I can help with the stormwater problem," you know, something like that. But I don't, we're probably making more of this than it probably is, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody choose not working squeeze, and this is what we're getting into right now. And, and, we haven't gotten to this other part of the...
Yeah, what?
Do we wanna give the...
Rain barrels.
I think, I think we wanna give the credit.
And then let Tony go back and come up with two alternatives. One, now we'll have, Dan will come back. Uh, Dan, you come back with it.
Joey Swanigan.
Let, let me, let me, let me ask a, a question. I know, I don't foresee that the, uh, single-family residential impact on the finances of the stormwater is going to be very significant, but I don't see that we're gonna have a lot of people out relying, as has been said earlier, to rush out and do that, because it's just not enough money for them to worry about, you know? However, it's probably a different story on the commercial end of this thing. Now, some of these people have pretty substantial monthly payments that, that they're making, and, uh, they would be willing maybe to do something, hopefully, to, to do that and, and get, and get a credit up to, is it fifty percent on the commercial?
I believe so.
Okay. Uh, but now also the question, as I, I recall arose in some of the meetings, about, uh, what about those developments that already meet all the criteria and have before that are paying stormwater now? That's gonna come off. I assume they're gonna get credit. Are we only talking about anything that's done from this point forward?
Absolutely.
Is that what you would think?
Absolutely.
This point forward?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, well, that's a very important...
And we've probably done before, and those may, you've got somebody who have been under these development regulations, that you can go out and say, "Yeah, you can fully comply." Are they...
And they're not gonna get the credit.
Their qualification as a credit.
It should.
So that's a really touchy, and it could mean, it could mean, uh, a big, a big impact.
It could be some discussion and argument at least.
This week, we, we can give to them what we could not give it to them. Which one would they want?
Well, they would, they would definitely want it. I'll tell you two examples that I always use in these meetings is Canton Marketplace versus Reeves Hill Subdivision. Reeves Hill Subdivision's a group of private residences that want the first subdivision, so they're gonna have stormwater quality detention or retention or that sort of thing. Then you've got Canton Marketplace, who've got wet detention ponds, filter the water, make, spend major money on discharge of clean water into Canton Creek. Well, the intent, the way I see it in here, is if a group of those people from Reeves Hill wanted to come in, donate a spot of land large enough for retention pond, build it, the whole group gets credit, is the way I see that works toward the single-family type developments. Now, all the, all the ones who have already been made to comply with this through other ordinances and development regs, that's something that we haven't had anybody apply. Come in and say, "Hey, we think we deserve credits, because, because we have this in place." And it ultimately, that will come to a decision you'd have to make, and if somebody submitted that application.
Well, what about an H O A that has all of that too? Then would all those residents get credit or...
Possibly. Now, that's something that's never been...
You know?
Now, that's a, that'd be a mess, I think.
Reeves Hill? I mean...
I think, I think...
See what I'm saying?
Yeah. I, 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 I don't think we need to get the mix of residential and the commercial.
No.
I think, I think it ought to be on an individual residence deal, and then commercial's a different animal, though.
Commercial's a different animal.
Uh, because essentially, if, if you talk about an H O A and all that, you're almost mixing the development, which is sort of commercial, with single-family residences.
Right.
And, and I don't, I think you need to, I think you need to look at like shopping centers and, and commercial businesses and stuff like that differently.
Or a straight line.
Yeah. But the question would be, what effect? We, we really don't have a handle, and I don't know if we would until a year or so later, but what effect would, once Canton Marketplace realizes that we can do that, and the others begin to realize they can do that, uh, what kind of financial impact would that have?
Yes.
I don't think the residential's gonna be substantial, but the commercial, I think, has that potential.
I've been afraid to speculate, but we have a lot of over-commercial impervious areas that...
Do we have to take...
A lot, a lot more of those compared to the ones who are fully, you know, in compliance. I think, I don't think it'd be...
Do we have to do it all at one time? Do we take either commercial or residential?
Well, it's, it's not all gonna happen at one time. I mean, this is gonna be an incremental, uh, reduction in the revenue if all of these sub, uh, commercial places take advantage of it. And I agree, Mayor, I don't think the single family's gonna make a big difference, but I think in the ordinance somewhere, it, it specifically exempts HOAs. I mean, it says, you know, they don't qualify for certain credits. But, uh, before we do any changes to the revenue, we should, we have to implement the credit manual. That's state law, if I'm not mistaken. So we have to do something there, and when we do that, then we can see what the impact would be on our revenues, then we'll know, uh, which way we're headed with this thing, rather than just arbitrarily, as the advisory board said, is, is cut the revenue, and we don't know where we're going with this. So let's do this first, hold everything steady until we know where this is gonna take us.
If it impacts us too severely, it always raises the stormwater rates, but again, who said that? I just can't.
Just so you're, just so you're clear, we can have a manual. The press manual is out there. Well, it's not a new, the manual's not a new...
It's not new, but it's, it's, it's just like some of the other stuff we have. Nobody knows about it.
Right.
I mean, you know, we've got, we've got a, a rebate on, uh, low-flow toilets, and probably about eight people have taken that.
I'm happy.
But that's not been, you know, and...
That's the first one.
So people don't know.
Shopping center out there, on, Kmart shopping center. That's been in here twenty years.
Correct.
Okay. They probably didn't have a system back then worried about stormwater. Their problem was make sure the water didn't sit on their park lot and drained off somewhere. Now, you go to Canton Marketplace, they, as you just said, they went through a tremendous amount of expense to make sure what went off at their park lots went through a system, and we had that water coming in to break it. So if, if you say, "Okay, now we gotta give them, because they did this, this group over here at the Kmart, they're gonna back it." Okay? We, uh, we've always had, we're grandfathered in, whatever. So we're getting into, uh...
Go, if you want the credit, go do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Go on the credit, go do it.
But before we do it, we oughta do an analysis of...
Well, how do you have financial impact?
How many, what's... Yeah. It's just like the school. Right now, we know the number is, is between sixty and seventy, so it's safe, it's seventy.
But you could treat that uniquely.
Yeah, I know that, but we know what that number is because we, we are receiving that check from the school. What we need to do is look and see where these others are paying, sending their checks. How much it is of that, of those groups? What's the group stuff? Is group stuff that fall underneath?
Group stuff has regional detention ponds. They're not fully compliant with what's all listed in here, but they do have, they're about middle of the road as far as water quality.
So they get X percentage, maybe?
Yeah.
But then you got Prominence Point, you got Prominence Point, and Canton Marketplace, and, uh, what else?
Well, we took the largest, we took the largest twenty or twenty-five, uh, commercial properties that pay into stormwater, seeing which ones that are like, like at the Marketplace, we eliminate those, 'cause we already know their treatment. But take the ones that we know are not, and you just look at them and just say, "They probably could or would," and then just do a rough estimate. If they cut theirs by fifty percent, how much money is that?
Well, you're gonna treat full compliance or partial compliance?
Just take it.
That's another question you, you...
Then rather than fifty percent, take fifty, twenty-five percent?
Well, then, then you're gonna give credit for partial compliance.
So that's, so what's the biggest blocks? Is Canton Marketplace, and they do, it's in compliance. Therefore, they should get a credit break. And how much step up cost? Absolutely. So you got one going one way, and the other one going the other way. So we gotta look at those impacts. But if you look at the top twenty-five that pay in, and sit, cut it in half, and that's the, that's the worst-case scenario, what's, what is it, how does it look? If you take the top twenty-five and, and... If you take the top twenty-five in gross dollars, cut it in half, if that would be the worst-case scenario, then that's how much, that's a major impact.
What do you think, what do you, that, what can you-
Well, the only, the only question I have with all this logic is what's, what's the goal of looking at it? To reduce the, the charge or to reduce the benefit that you can receive or yet eliminate?
The goal is to better determine what we should or should not do.
Well, what are our alternatives?
Well, we gotta have stormwater, Daniel.
We gotta have a storm- We just need to improve it. Okay, the goal is improve the quality, that's what it's for, is improve the quality of the runoff water.
We're not talking about that, we're talking about the quality of the revenue.
Yeah, well, yeah. But, okay, but if, uh, let's say river stone right now does not fill up totally compliant. So if they did, well, number one, improve the quality, therefore we give credit to reduce the revenue flow. How much did that impact that piece? That's, so we're charged with quality water.
Well, I understand that, but my, my point is we have the manual, we have the percentages, we have the system set up. Let's implement it and see how much we get hit. And, and we, we still have to have it, so a lot of, a lot of places don't have a stormwater utility charge anyway. So if we get, if it gets reduced down to zero, then we're even with the rest of the world.
I tend to agree with you.
I have a, I have a look-see first before you know it. We have no gun and I'm here to implement this thing tomorrow or a week from now.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
We, we have to have a stormwater credit manual.
We got one, we were improving this one.
But we don't, but we don't enforce it, we don't apply it, nobody uses it.
Nobody's shooting us yet. Let's take a look and see what it's gonna do to us. Our place, Mary, is working on, you're working on a certificate or something that goes to the state, right?
The MS four.
Yeah.
That's, that was the question I was gonna ask. We, we may not have to have a stormwater fee, but we got to meet certain stormwater compliance requirements, isn't that correct, Eric? So it's just a question of where you get the money from to meet those compliance requirements, is that correct, Mr. Eric? So if we don't meet them out of a stormwater fund, we're gonna meet them out of general property taxes, is that correct?
That would be my assumption.
Okay. But we're, we are compliant now, right? I mean, we've adopted this manual, so we're compliant. The only thing is, I tend to agree really with what Bob said is that, is that, you know, we gotta have the thing and, and the only way really we're gonna get a real handle on this is to see what happens, I think. And we, we can get, you know, Joby can take, like you say, those first twenty-five and take fifty percent off of that and tell you how much you're gonna lose if that were to happen. But we don't know really what's gonna happen and, and we've, we've got enough stormwater money that, uh, you know, down, I think you can get a year and if it were just tragic when you got to the other end there, to the end of next year, uh, and, and we saw we just lost all kind of revenues, then you just change the fee.
But by looking at that, at that base, you're looking at worst-case scenarios, which means we're probably gonna come out better.
Lot better.
So it's just a, a forecast.
I'm not against looking at it. All, all I'm saying is don't just stop and look and do nothing.
I didn't say that.
I guess, I guess the question here, are, are we reasonably, other than what we're talking about here, are we reasonably satisfied with these percentages and, and what's laid out here as far as the credits go? As far as, do these need to be changed in some way?
For NSFRs, I'm content, I'm not content with the single-family residents. We can change that, but it'll be strictly academic, but people won't apply anyway. But, but I think that we're, you know, we say they can have fifty percent, they really can't. If you live in a subdivision, you can have fifty percent credit, you're twenty-five. Twenty-five percent is a buck.
Yeah.
Twelve dollars a year.
Yeah, he said twelve bucks a year.
More or less than that if you go with the fee. Or, 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 yeah. That's what I have. So, yeah. Well, four dollars for a rain barrel.
But, but the thing is, and, and I'm just gonna throw this one out, the rain barrel is not gonna save, save a lot in your stormwater, but what is, what will save, is use the rain barrel money to water your plants and out, turn on the sprinkler system, that's, you're gonna save money. I, my neighbors always wonder how to come up and pay in the same water bill they do. I collect all my air conditioning water, water my shrubs every morning, except for all this rain, and I just hook it up to the drain. Say, I, I get ten gallons a day, air conditioning water on a hot summer day.
Except for you wore your green shirts, huh?
Ten, ten, ten gallons a day.
Except for you wore your green shirts, huh?
That's right, I'm growing green.
Okay. I forgot, I forgot, we're gonna talk about plenty there. I got three of them.
All right. Should we get to the ordinance next?
We need an answer on the school, right?
Well, I, my feeling is ask the school what they, what would be feasible for them.
Well, the mayor said it's a couple pamphlets, a couple pamphlets.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, the question back, the case for pamphlets. Stormwater can be so hard to figure out.
What's education? Yeah, I think if, you know, I think if they're gonna get a sixty or seventy thousand dollar reduction in their fee, they can pay for it, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, but, okay.
They could, it's like-
It's a counter impact.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's government side that will, I think, yeah, move it without any problems.
Without any problems. Okay, then the next action step is gonna be get a handle on the person. Right?
I, I think we already have a breakdown of the commercial properties on the revenue side versus the residential property side.
And it's about, it's about setting, setting it, of the revenues come from commercial properties.
Also, okay, we'll take seventy, seventy percent of the revenues. How much money is that?
Probably a million dollars, roughly, seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand, now cut it in half, that'd be the worst-case scenario.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand. So, and we live with three hundred and fifty thousand from residential. Isn't that basically what they came in here for here?
Pretty much.
Pretty much, that's thirty, thirty, oh, actually, thirty-nine percent.
That's how we get it.
See how it matches up. Okay, next, we can make some, uh, commercial property owners happy, we can put some others in the spin. But Council, Mike, Dan, you know the, the projects that we got a bit to do? Do we have, if we cut it like that, do we, will we have enough money to do what you wanna do? You and Dave? I'm saying Dave, you're going like this.
Not after what we saw at Boling Park.
Uh, yeah. Will those come up? We don't know, but, but this is the time that we need to hear about it. So we, we're down to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from residential. What is, what is something that you're gonna need? What, throw us a guess at it.
For those stream restoration, I have no idea, but it'll be substantial based on after all those floods.
Dave, let me ask you a question, this may be getting off subject, there's something that still confuses and frustrates me. If, if the co-op engineer quote owns a river unquote, why do we have to fix the river bank when?
We, we asked him that the other day and, um, their response was, well-
They don't own the river.
You, you, uh, we don't have all this development here, um, and that's, that's up to you.
They don't own Boling Park.
Yeah, but, but all of the development there, the, the park, the, the school, the, all, everything is built up there. That's not theirs.
Oh, and they can't hold the water.
They said, that's up to you, if you wanna protect that, you have to fix it. He says if it was all poor property, undeveloped enough, we'd leave it.
That is, like, if you had his car, they wouldn't care, but-
It's, it's eroding our, yeah.
Don't we get a consent order because we're putting upsoil or whatever into that river?
I don't know if that consent order would-
I, I'd be, you're so correct.
But that, that, we asked them that question, that was the only-
But you have to remember, most of this property is privately owned property. That's kind of the concern I have, is that we are, we go in on private property and restore their property. That's what's happening when you, when you restore the bank like that. So if I own five acres along the river, if, if the bank washes out, can I call the city to come out, build my property back out there another hundred feet and just wash the water?
It says, it says in the stormwater, in the stormwater ordinance, it said, it specifically states, and, and I, I could find it here to read it, but it specifically states that if the homeowner doesn't do, or the property owner doesn't fix stormwater damage, then the city can come in and fix it and build it. Right, Joby?
Yes.
And so are we gonna build the American Legion? Is that part of the plan?
Well-
I don't think so.
No. No, but I'm saying we can't get, it, it says in the ordinance that we can do that. So my question was, could we do that on some, somebody's street if they don't have a curb or gutter?
You talk about retention bonds, where trees were on the, unless it's not clean, the city comes out and cleans it, build the homeowner's association.
That's, it's in the ordinance.
I think that's what it should, I think that's-
So what do you do if they don't pay it?
Uh, they don't get any more, they don't get any more COs, we don't maintain their streets or whatever.
Leans, you probably do lean it. Lean, lean, lean is probably all you can do.
Yeah.
Let me answer that.
Well, Dave, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we wanna talk about the stormwater ordinance now? We haven't done it.
There I am.
Well, I, I was looking at, there's a couple of things that I would suggest we make some changes in. In, in section six hundred one G, uh, there's the spelling error on line eleven, it says redne, R-E-D-N-E-E, I think it meant, it should be reduce. And then section six hundred seven dash B, the last five lines are repetitious of a paragraph, earlier paragraph. And then it's six hundred seven C and D, uh, we should underline technical manual just as we have in paragraphs before. And that's the only modifications I would suggest in the ordinance.
Officer, you read that, I think you're pretty good.
I read it at six o'clock in the morning, I read it and compared it to the old one to see what they changed, because they never told us what they changed. But, uh, the one thing that I did notice, and this is just, uh, in section six hundred dash four, it says revenue generated by stormwater charges may be used to, and not limited to payment of revenue bond obligations incurred for consideration and improvements to the stormwater system. The stormwater system is defined, is defined as facilities as well. So it, it meant to me, and I'm, this is not a legal opinion, it meant to me that we could use stormwater money to pay in certain respects for I N I repair, or even in some cases, a wastewater treatment plant. And, and that, that's just my own opinion.
Well, one of them, one of our I N I is due to where they used to dump the sewage into the river, they stopped doing that. And prior to doing that, we hooked the I N I up, or the, uh, stormwater into those sewer lines. And so now instead of going into the river, it goes into the sewer plant. For me, that, I agree with you, so it's usually-
And the other, the other thing in six hundred dash twelve was, uh, it said, this, this clause permit the city to charge their homeowner an HOA for curbing gutters if it must accept non-conforming streets. That's another question that, you know, we could get a legal opinion on. Though, that's all that I had on stormwater.
So, just what were the, the changes? I remember, I don't have it front of me, but several places it said stormwater funds can be used for both maintenance of existing and capital improvement projects as well, right?
It is.
It said like that five different places. That, that part didn't get changed, right?
We changed, we changed railroad tracks of curvaceous material.
That was, that was in the original, I believe. I, I had a suggestion, I don't know if it-
Well, well-
I think the, like, we charge the Canton golf course, uh, an impervious surface charge based on their cart path. Now, the cart path, my way of thinking, just kinda dribbles off to the side, but cart path is not that big, but it, it allows to an awful lot of impervious surface for golf courses. And if we, we can exempt the railroad track, I'm thinking maybe we can exempt the cart path and the golf course. I don't know if we wanna do that because they might set up a hornet's nest there.
We're gonna have that, well, we've got Heritage Park, we've got, we've got, we don't know where-
We don't pay the tax.
I know, I know, we're gonna have these, yeah, areas.
Man, I'm, I'm just thinking of the Canton golf course, just other golf course, it's not a fact.
Are they charged? I would even, never have even understood how that works. Are, are impervious surfaces charged for two at a different rate?
No, not at all. It's all impervious. Based on the square footage of impervious. It's three thousand or two thousand is the minimum.
Two thousand. Did they ever, did they ever, the ordinance somewhere, that formula we talked about the other day, did you?
How did they take some?
I, uh, don't even understand how that works, I don't know if anybody-
I think that got changed, uh-
Yeah, the formula. Of course, that grievance hundred dash six.
What does it say then?
Six P equals parentheses I R times I U, close parentheses plus A R times A U.
Well, one of those, what they did, they went back and put in a zero.
Oh, I got it.
They went back and took that formula. Originally, when this thing first started, it was based, as I understood it, on, on percentage of impervious surface on, on the land and everything. I mean, if you had a, if you had a big acreage and, and a small amount of impervious surface, you know, uh, it was unlikely that you were gonna be running, water was gonna be running off of you, even off your property like your bill. I mean, down where you are, I mean, what runs off your house, I doubt actually gets off of your property anytime soon anyway. Uh, and, but they went back and the council changed it, 'cause I, I was telling Scott earlier today, the first bill I got, and some of you, some of you will remember that, the first bill I got for stormwater on a monthly basis was sixteen dollars or something when I started. And the neighbors next door, theirs were like twenty-four or twenty-five, they had more acreage, a bigger place. And, uh, so what happened was, is the people raised a lot of sand and the council went back and changed it so that for residences only, they did the four oh eight and a maximum of eight sixteen. And they based the commercials solely on, if you got, you know, two thousand square-foot units, right? In other words, it's, it's, uh, four oh eight for every two thousand square-foot unit you got. And they, they went back and changed that. So I'm not, it, that formula will work, I think, but you gotta put zero in on one of those I R, whatever it is there.
That is correct, and I, I do believe we are taking the, uh, that, that second part of that equation completely out.
Out of it.
Okay, so just the first two, the A, the, 'cause I looked it up, those, those letters are in the credit manual. What do those letters mean? I mean, they are-
Yeah, impervious, I U is the impervious unit, which is the two thousand feet, and the H U is the area unit. And there's a little bit of a process, a couple of-
So, so it's now irrelevant?
It's, yeah, I wouldn't worry about all those things, you can figure it up a whole lot easier as long as you know the square footage of impervious surface on a piece of property. And for every two thousand square feet, in commercial, it's four dollars and eight cents. If it's residential, if you got up to, if you have up to two thousand, it's four oh eight, if you got more than two thousand, then it's eight sixteen, right?
Right, and, and the eight sixteen is the cap, is a cap.
For residence.
For residence.
The mayor probably should be eight sixteen, and it doesn't, it would be a little easier to see.
And you know, I'm not, you ever looked that up?
Yep.
I'm not. Any other comments, questions? I don't know, we've got a lot resolved, but we did talk a lot.
Sorry, missed the first part.
But I, I think basically, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we're gonna kinda ask the schools if they can do something like that, or, you know, so that they can get their credit. I think it'd be crazy not to, to get- I think it'd be crazy not to, to get sixty thousand dollars, you know, and I think they would do it if they, you know, somebody's, I'm surprised they did, but somebody's going to tell them, you know, you don't have to do a lot, but we want you to do something.
Yeah. When he worked, it was changed, key workers, they, we had it before, it was one hundred percent students, period.
Maybe if somebody was absent, it didn't count, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Any other thoughts? I'm just, what's the directive here? Any other directive other than the school system and, uh, uh, some of the changes that you made in the, recommended in the ordinance itself?
I'll, I'll give a breakdown on the revenues of commercial.
Right, oh, yeah, that too.
Residential, give some sort of ideas of kind of why, what we're looking at that way.
Go ahead, Jay.
I'm just going to ask you, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm able to get it, I think you all have covered this, but like, uh, where we have, uh, a lot of asphalt, and they're purchasing car, you.
Yeah.
Is there a cap on those?
No.
Not on commercial properties.
I'm just curious.
No.
I can tell you right now, he pays almost a thousand dollars a month. Whole, several lanes. What do you, you department or whatever?
Prosecute business.
Prosecute business.
All right, can, uh, should we have this, or can we have this in a works, next work session to go over it again? Any changes or any information that you'd be sure of that?
Yeah, we'll be glad to bring that up.
Okay.
Regular work session or scheduled work session?
I'd say just regular.
Yeah.
Yeah. Set him up.
I don't necessarily want to have an MC again.
But it's same as with schools or.
Certainly, well, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I assume we're adjourned, let's, let's be.